Yeah, I can do Thursday.
Alright, cool.
Thursday, six o'clock?
Alright, and then so Thursday, oh, my bad. Alright, so we'll shoot the Thursday to have a workshop and then we have to, wanna give us until Tuesday to submit all the deadlines?
Yeah, give us some heads up on.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so Tuesday we submit to you.
Okay, that's good. We can have the detailed reports.
Okay, so Tuesday about five o'clock, that's okay?
Okay, so if there's any specific items that the public would be of particular interest in, they need to be listed on the agenda instead of just budget workshop. If you're discussing specific things of public interest, you need more than two days so that she can get it posted directly.
Alright, cool, so that means we gotta send it in by Friday?
No, Friday should work.
Or by Monday? Alright, cool.
Yeah, it's just his deadline through the thirty first, you guys would never shoot that though.
Think it'll be by Monday? Alright, so we'll take a chance like that.
But B C C, we should use B C C council so we're not all that asking for it.
Alright, so the third will be in that time?
Regular C C. It's B C C, so there's no communication.
That, that is communication, don't B C, don't B C C yourselves, that's, just don't, that's.
Cause if Biden goes through with this, then we can.
Send it to Ms. Biden.
And she runs it by me so that we don't, if it's the same thing, we can contact somebody.
Sounds great.
Yeah, so what's, what is seventy two, um, would that be Monday?
Monday.
Monday.
Alright, so we'll have to submit it to the bottom by Monday?
Yes.
Well, it's gotta be posted by Monday and it takes her, depending on how many things you have, it can take her all day to prep.
Alright, so we submit it by the thirty first?
Appreciate it, JJ.
Item sixteen, discuss and take action on U S W report on procedures for planning and place on the next agenda. Motion, ready for questions?
Question.
All those in favor? Motion passed. Item seventeen, discuss, consider and take action on costs, budget in relation to reports and updates on Panthaill Apartments, Campus Edge and the Gates of Prairie View, Trilogy Engineering, Bureau Veritas and U S W.
Like to talk about just the same way we did for A V R. So we have a workshop to say how this coach affects a citizen, then we come back, then he discussed everybody did the same thing for A V R.
On just this item?
On, on the item, this is granted.
Okay, um, so hold a wo- a workshop?
Yeah, hold a workshop, uh, or, uh, as we did last time.
Is there, is there anything pressing that we need to, would go into workshop?
We're running right now.
Okay, yes, uh, that would work, so you might come.
Well, we'll get together and just as, as we did for A V R, hold the town hall.
Okay, that for A V R?
Yes.
Alright, no problem.
So I move that item sixteen be on the next meeting, councilman, agenda.
Second, has been properly moved, the second item sixteen, discuss and take action on U S W report on procedures for planning and place on the next agenda. For the motion, ready for questions?
Question.
All those in favor? Motion passed. Item seventeen, discuss, consider and take action on costs, budget in relation to reports and updates on Panthaill Apartments, Campus Edge and the Gates of Prairie View, Trilogy Engineering, Bureau Veritas and U S W. Trilogy and U S W are here, what, what we're looking for, and I ran the spot, just the city attorney to be clear, we wanna make sure, since this was not in our budget, that whatever spending you guys are doing on this project, in case we need to do a budget amendment, um, we're aware of the expenses, I know some of the bills have gone up quite a bit because of reports and things you had to do. So we need to know, if you don't have this evening, that, that's fine, but what we're looking for is for you to bring back those numbers for the next meeting that are just related to those three projects. Enough?
We have numbers through December of nineteen spent, I think the other part of your question was you sort of project spending moving forward to address all the recommendations.
Yes.
So we have a, that's an estimate.
Okay, so you can put that together, the update, that would be fine, both of, yes, sir.
Councilor.
On the, um, cost, once you also pull together the cost, we, city council have approved a certain amount of money from, at the beginning of this project. Once you do that, um, in the cost, can you also give us recommendations, since you represent the city, recommendations on how we recruit some of that cost? Some of the things that, that you discovered was at the fault of the owner developer, and so, uh, recommendations on how we would, uh, get money back from that developer. Uh, because the whole point of this is they should have paid for these things at the beginning, which would, we wouldn't have to be going back, so if you could also give us those recommendations.
So, the way we submit our invoices after request, Mr. Mayor, that's split up going in, the things that are obviously reimbursable to the city, those are split out even on the invoices as they go in. So when we pull our numbers, it's numbers that are not reimbursable, numbers that are.
Cause I know with, at, at the meeting we had, uh, last week with Bureau Veritas and what have you, the major concern that came out, and council, we've discussed this, are even through some of your reports, they're subjective, one engineer might say four inch pipe and another might suggest a six inch, well, those are suggestions or recommendations, they're not ordinances or requirements. And that's where, uh, I know Mr. Peters with Trilogy is working on, uh, helping to update the ordinances per our meeting with some of the things that we discussed, because our ordinances are so old, not specific, and it's hard to hold anyone accountable, uh, same with the resolution on reporting when water's gonna be cut off, there's nothing out there. And the, is there a Trilogy thing, is there something that, I mean, is there a thing, uh, T C Q thing that you are aware of and notifications? Cause I know the city needs to know, cause we need to notify with all the cutoffs we've done.
Throughout all my working years, they notified the city if a major, uh, work is being done, so we should have been notified.
Okay, but, but is it a requirement, uh, uh, I mean, we need, if we're gonna hold someone to the fire, if we don't have it, then we'll create it if we need an ordinance or something. But we need to know in writing what we're working with, so that we can go back and recruit costs where feasible and things like that. But if it's subjective, you know, I know our prior engineer recommended things, well, that's not something you can hold someone to. If we need to put those in ordinances, that it has to be per X number of people, X number of beds, uh, certain size pipes and things like that, or equipment in place, then that's what we wanna use this process to help us tighten up on.
Sir, I just wanna, I just wanna interject really quick and just, just for the record, it doesn't have to be a requirement for us to hold people accountable for somebody's water being off for seventeen hours, that's just a common courtesy. So we can, we can have a conversation, even though it's not a requirement, everything doesn't have to be all, you should wanna be a good neighbor and be a custodian of people in their, in their resources.
I know, but my, my concern is, as a city, we've gone those number of hours, we did an initial robo-call and we didn't know how long it was gonna take to fix it.
Right.
You know, we're out there till three, four o'clock in the morning.
They'll be calling, they'll be communicating, and, and, and so, the, the issue isn't the fact that the water is off, the issue is the fact that we wasn't communicating, and it, and it put people. Sure.
I, I think part of, Mr. Mayor. But again, we want.
That's not what we're talking, that's not what we're talking about right now, I just wanted to throw that out there, you don't, you don't have to, you don't have to be lawless to have a conversation.
Well, it does, it has to be lawless to hold people accountable.
No, it doesn't.
I, I agree with customer service and all that, but I'm saying if, if another one of our major companies had a water cutoff and it affected the city and they didn't know, because they didn't know how our pipes run, because some of them are antiquated with the way the city evolved and developed and we're still getting caught up on those things, I'm just saying, I agree with you gentlemen, but in my job, I need it to be mandatory so I can hold them accountable, that's all I'm telling you. And your job is to give me the accountability so we can go and enforce it, that's all, that's all I'm saying, I agree with you.
Can I second this, you on this item?
Seventeen, my, my, um, uh, in seventeen, I just wanna make sure that we're clear. The reason why we're doing, uh, all these, we're getting updated reports and going through this process is because on Panther Hill Apartments, Campus Edge and the Gates, which are the three, uh, uh, developments that are named, they failed to do certain things. The, what we're going back to do is to verify if things for the public health and safety of our community and have our current experts, U S W, Trilogy Engineering and Bureau Veritas check off all these things. We have found that there's a number of things and recommendations that was given to us that the owners of Panther Hill and Campus Edge failed to do. The cost, again, Mr. Mayor, as you, as you asked and he said you will give, the cost, once we get that information, will be, uh, we, once we get the information, we will then turn around and be, and bill the developer who should have paid for civil engineering plans to be reviewed prior to this development. Backflow, things that we put in ten thousand on Campus Edge and Panther Hill, total of twenty thousand dollars, are things that was already sent that they should have paid for. So again, uh, I'm glad you wanna know the cost, uh, but soon as we get the cost, we wanna also be able to bill the developer on things that are billable. Uh, and, and we don't want to, uh, we wanna make sure that the city's taxpayers' dollars are being used, uh, to move forward, but that's all my comments. Definitely, uh, I wanna just say, I just wanna touch on, the civil plan review, they did pay for. The engineer that we had did a re-review, so they paid for it, they're my property, you're former engineer, Panther Hill, what one are you talking about? Panther, so, so I thought you were gonna say Campus Edge, but Panther Hill, uh, there was an engineer that was not paid on Panther Hill, on Panther Hill. That's not true. And Mr. Duck? That's not true, the plans, they wrote the check, I brought a copy of the check here to council and you were on the council, you may have forgotten, and that's okay, cause it's been a while. No, I didn't forget. But what I'm saying is, before we submit the plans out to Bureau Veritas, who got two sets, and the civil engineer who Trilogy confirmed, reviewed them, the fees were paid. Yes, sir.
So point of order. Point of order, uh, I think we're getting off of talking about the cost. And so if there aren't any more updates about the actual cost, you're supposed to be receiving, um, conversation from our experts about the cost, and so if there aren't any more updates about the cost, I haven't.
I just wanted to clarify how we're approaching this, so in these reports, there are recommendations. So the first step after that is to go sit down and talk through these recommendations with each one of these properties to determine whether those recommendations are gonna be addressed, right?
Now, now you're going into item eighteen, do you, council wanna go to item eighteen?
There aren't any updates about the cost.
You can put that into your, your.
Okay, I'm, I'm moving to remove the agenda items.
Okay, item eighteen, uh, we probably move the second and we go to item eighteen, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay, item eighteen, discuss, consider, and you can pick up on what you're saying.
Okay, alright, sorry.
That's where, that's where you were going, so we just wanna move the agenda. Discuss, consider and take action on reports and updates from Trilogy Engineering, Bureau Veritas and U S W for compliance with inspection and city code standards, especially as they relate to site life safety and health and safety issues, and attorney recommendations for compliance on Panther Hill Apartments, Campus Edge and the Gates of Prairie View. But wait a minute, we had someone who wanted to speak to this. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, two, one.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Allen?
Hold on.
If, if like, since the beginning of the meeting, both Ms. Biden and I have found the ordinance which was passed regarding citizen comments, and it is three minutes per agenda item, so stand corrected on that.
Okay, so is that inclusive of comments or separate?
Three for non-agenda, and then three for, no, three for each agenda item that they are signed, three minutes per.
So six? Okay, so if they spoke on three minutes, I just wanna be, hold on, hold on, let's, let's be clear, council, we're, we're, we're hearing from our legal counsel, I want y'all to catch this. I wanna be clear too, so if, if I spoke, if three minutes under citizen comments on an issue, I'm done?
No.
Okay, and yet three minutes on the issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Or as many different issues as I wanna speak.
When do we approve, when do we approve at what date?
Uh, September twenty-third.
Twenty, twenty nineteen?
Yes.
September tw- said that again, the date?
September twenty-third, twenty nineteen, and we both separately found it, so.
Okay, so, so Ms. Jackson, I just wanna be clear, so Ms. Jackson has three minutes on item eighteen, please, council, council, yes, ma'am, go ahead, please.
Okay, so on agenda item number eighteen, the concern is life safety, safety and health concerns. So I wanna give you some things that I have been receiving from students that live in Panther Hill Apartments since it opened. First of all, the water cutoffs, we know the issue with that, that has been occurring too often. It occurred, they have water shut off almost every week, and it's never just a certain timeframe that they are given, it's a timeframe that's for so many hours that goes into the next day as well. And also, I have a lot of students that have sent me pictures of their skin, that they have gotten skin infections while living in those apartments. Even after students have been in the pool from when it was hot outside, some had rashes, they've gotten, they've gone to the doctor and they've received antibiotic creams and soaps for their skin for these infections. And it's only been from students at Panther Hill, I have friends that live all over Prairie View, and I haven't, I've talked to all of them, none of them have that issue, but students that live at Panther Hill. So that is a health safety issue. Next, a life safety issue, as I stated, in August, my father fell from the third floor staircase. I found out from Ms. Rogers that possibly they did not inspect the stair tread. And anyone can tell you, if you've actually gone on the property and you've walked some of the stairwells, you know that they're not even, they're not even. And a lot of them, they're supposed to be seven and a half inches, and it is a requirement, the stairwell that my dad fell from was eleven and a half. He tore his quadriceps, he could have busted his head on the rail that he fell into, that's life safety. So if you wanna continue to bring that up, Mr. Mayor, please reference to what I'm saying, you, you all have the video, please reference everything that I've said because they're all facts. When he fell from that stairwell, he had to have surgery and go to the hospital, Dr. Brown knows she was there, she came, and also, uh, when these things happen, it's kind of funny to me because citizens come from, you know, around when these things happen, but then, when we start talking about safety and what we need to do to change, that's never in the conversation. So I need you all to figure out what you're gonna do about seeing if maybe one of these parties can go on the property. I know it's a private owner and a private property, but to get these things fixed, to avoid liability, somebody needs to go there and see. And because if you don't, it's gonna keep happening, there's things that are, that keep happening over there, and I understand it's a process, but I need, I need things to get in gear. Because it's, it's too much, I worry all the time, I have friends stay over there, I worry about them all the time, constantly asking them, hey, are you okay? And my parents, when I was living over there, they, they constantly called me every single day, hey, you alright, do I need to come up there? So I need you all to please get the ball rolling, Councilor Rowan, I appreciate everything you've done for doing what, you know, what needed to be done, so that's all I have.
Was there someone else on item eighteen?
Arthur.
I'm good, she, she touched it. Okay. Is yours on eighteen, I think you're on eighteen. Yes, you got, uh, Dr. Brown, you're on eighteen.
I was on seventeen, that's eighteen.
I know, but we're on eighteen right now.
No, we just skipped it, we talked about, uh, outside.
Yeah, can you come up on eighteen right now? My apologies for that, but. Oh, okay, let's, let's, let's do item eighteen, please.
Thank you very much, good evening to our wonderful mayor and even to our remarkable city council members, may the blessings of our Lord Jesus be upon you continually. I come to you today as a very concerned resident of our city to share my thoughts, experiences related to the recent unanticipated water shut off at Panther Hill Apartments. Of course, I've already made it a point to sit down and talk with Panther Hill staff and some of the tenants here who affected by the water shut off, and I thought to get the relevant facts. As I carefully listen to their experiences of disturbing frustration, I got it. I immediately connected with each one of them in such a deep, heartfelt, empathetic way. I could definitely relate, what came to my mind immediately was one of the most horrific, frustrating, disturbing experiences I've ever had since living in Prairie View. What came to my mind was a totally dissatisfaction, dissatisf- dissatisfactory situation that happened to me several years ago, it could have been ten, twelve years ago. But I will never forget it, and I learned a huge bunch of lessons. Back in the day before weaves and wigs and extensions became women's go-to, I decided one day to do my own hair, which meant, which meant I got up, took me a nice hot shower, got dressed, went to the beauty supply shop and purchased one of those at-home relaxer kits. Got home, set everything out carefully, set the timer for fifteen minutes, applied the relaxer to my head according to the directions on the box. By the time it went off, I put my head under the faucet in the kitchen sink, turned on the water and some water slowly came out for roughly about ten seconds. And then a spurt, 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 the water started running in the faucet. I said, oh, Lord, what is this, I'm there bending over the faucet, turning the knobs on and off, no water, can you imagine my head full of relaxer? Timer gone off and no water. I know good and well I had paid my water bill, but the city has some type of water emergency and had to quickly shut off the water without any, any type of notice. So I had to think quickly, thanks be to God, I have always drank bottled water, and so I grabbed a gallon of bottled water, poured it all over my head, needless to say, one gallon of water with, with a handful of relaxer wasn't a viable solution. So I had to think and pray, finally I got the idea to hurry up and go to the nearest beauty salon. I did this and I recall they were able to help me out, but my hair suffered great damage. And even though I raised all kind of cane with our city, they did not adjust my bill and they did nothing because they said they didn't have a responsibility to notify me ahead of time. But as a result, I learned a couple of great lessons, first, Vita, don't do your own hair. Second, I learned to always keep a supply of bottled water on hand. So I got the message clearly from those who affected by the water outage in Panther Hill. Fortunately, but yet unfortunately, I was able to connect with them.
No, no talking in the audience, please, this is open meeting.
I was able to connect with them so deeply because the same type of thing has happened right here with our own city water. This is frustrating and inconvenient and disappointing, to say the least, but most of us here who have lived in this wonderful city for some time know from personal experience how this feels. And we empathize with anyone who would have this type of experience. And so I agree with Mrs. Herndon's recommendation as well as Mr. Glover's recommendation that we institute some type of formal policy that would notify citizens ahead of time, whether it's robo-call or door-to-door knocking, to notify citizens of when the water is gonna be shut off, whether it's a, uh, city shutting it off or a private developer shutting it off, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and just in, in, in fairness, were there any quick comments you had on item seventeen, since we skipped you and you did mark it down, with any?
Can't go back.
Are there any quick comments you have since we skipped you and the law says, when you tell us, we're supposed to let you speak, did you have any comments on item seventeen?
That's okay.
You're good, okay. Anything else on item eighteen?
Yes, ma'am, we have a number thing, thank you. Alright, so as we get to, uh, um, number eighteen, uh, definitely want to ask that, uh, we follow, um, A, and that's update reports from, well, actually, update reports from Bureau Veritas. Um, is Bureau Veritas here, Mr. Mayor, is the reason why Bureau Veritas is not here?
Uh, if there is, I don't know what it is.
But you're the chief administrator, so.
I know, and I just answered.
So my question, you didn't hear my question, said, did they communicate that they were not gonna be at the meeting to you, Mr. Mayor?
No.
So when someone doesn't communicate that, uh, are you gonna find out why they didn't come to the meeting that we asked them to be at?
I'd be glad to ask.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, um, but I, I, since we, we don't have Bureau Veritas here, council, at the last meeting, we all received the documents on Panther Hill's, uh, buildings one through thirty-two. You all have this, this information, uh, Mr. Mayor, do you know, uh, since you operate day-to-day, uh, did we receive the R and P letter, uh, from the certified, from the, the R and P letter for the electrical? Oh, excuse me, for the plumbing, excuse me.
Bureau Veritas, matter of fact, I did, um, I think, yeah, if I recall, cause all these conversations and everything flow, at our meeting last week, uh, they mentioned they may not be here because they didn't have anything additional to report. They were reviewing, uh, some additional information that they received from the R and P, I think they finalized all the engineering letters and something else, but I'll, I'll find out what that specific was.
You said, you, you said Bureau Franch, Bureau Veritas, and they communicated that they were reviewing, they didn't have anything to report, uh, do you see?
No, they said they, they, they received R and P letters and they're reviewing them.
So.
And they're double checking, because when they get it, in between everything else that they're doing, they have to go back and take a look at this, so from one meeting to another is not necessarily enough time, depending on how busy your schedule is.
So, so two things, is Bureau Veritas is a multi-india industry, so they can delegate their responsibility to somebody who can look at it, but just for, as a courtesy, I think if they're not going to show up to the meeting, that we request them to be, they should at least have made something in writing that, that one, explains why they're not going to be here, or two, communicate what you just communicated to us as to they've received, whatever, I mean, there should be some communication from them to us because we specifically requested that they be there, so I would like you as the, as the chief of the city to kind of quote that standard to those who are, who force over ten hours meetings.
Mr. Mayor, I wanna be clear, because this is, alright, so you're saying, uh, Ms. Rogers at the last meeting says that they received the engineering reports?
No, she, yeah, she said that at the last meeting, yes.
And I wanna be clear that you're going on record saying that Panther Hill Apartment submitted the R and P plans to Bureau Veritas and that that's what she told you, um, that she's reviewing the R and P plans for plumbing for Panther Hill Apartments?
Correct.
And so, we will have, so we're saying.
And they're not plans, they're letters.
Right, the letters, the R and P, the, R and P letters that from, uh, for Panther Hill for plumbing, we should, and we should, and they didn't give any additional information on that? On when they would have a report to it?
No.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, so did we also, did they also talk about, um, the updates, um, with the pool? Did we have a follow-up on the pool that was not permitted, it did not go through plan review, any inspections, possible safety issues?
Mr. Herndon, would you like to comment on what we're doing there?
I just wanna stay with you, what's the name, person that you didn't go to?
No, they are handling it, Bureau Veritas doesn't do it, she told us that for last meeting, so I commissioned Trilogy as engineers to handle it.
So Trilogy has been tasked with identifying an electrical engineering company that could come do a post-construction review of an electrical, um, configuration for a pool. Uh, we talked to them today, uh, they gave us two dates by which they're available to come out and perform the, uh, the electrical review, and those dates are both next week, next Monday, work next Tuesday. We're coordinating with them.
For the pool?
For the pool, I can say.
Since, okay, thank you, um, so.
Are you about to talk about the pool or something?
I'm talking about back to Bureau Veritas, what we're talking about.
Real quick with the pool?
Yes.
Uh, is there anything that is keeping, uh, students from getting into the pool, or is it right now as if, is everything still fine, if you're not aware of the information about the pool?
We have no knowledge that the pool has any operational issues, I think this was brought up last week by Bureau Vera's house that it just had not been inspected, so.
No, it said, it says the pool was not permitted, which means they didn't.
You have no permit.
Have a permit, which is our ordinance, it did not go through plan review, which is part of our ordinance, and it has no inspections, possible life safety issues, that's what they put in writing.
So I think the question is, are people still allowed to swim in permitted pool?
I don't, that, that's not, yeah, that's certainly not called a engineer, what we're trying to do is to get to inspection, to provide some additional assurances that it's okay, that's all we're trying.
So, uh, attorney.
Uh, my recollection, I, and I could be wrong, I thought the mayor was gonna ask them to shut it down in the meantime.
So, yeah, and that, of course, they're, they're aware and.
Do you have an argument, ma'am, that you, when you, the court, what you said?
So do, so, so we don't know if they're still allowed, so we still don't know if they're still allowed to, we have, we have, we didn't formally ask them.
they're still allowed in, because we have, we have, we didn't formally ask them to, to do anything, so it doesn't really matter, right? Because, I mean, just saying, hey, I think y'all should stop letting people swim, and then Brown's letting them stop, I think it had to be an official, official, at least official letter from the city saying, hey, we have these things from our city inspector that says your pool...
Well, it's, it's been official enough in that they've come in to request a permit, and no one's being allowed in. Heard inspection is going to happen in a matter of days.
So, you know for sure that they're not allowing anybody to swim?
Well, they've been informed not to do it, and as a result of that, they came in, and when it was pointed out that a permit had not been formed for the pool, they're getting in compliance, and we are double checking, which is what Trilogy has already located an engineering company to go check for the electrical, to be sure it's safe. Councilwoman Wallace?
Yeah, so was there a correspondence, like you, you informed them about the issue, and you told them that, you know, this is based off of what Bureau Veritas said about the pool? Did they respond back and say, okay, we are going to make sure that we're going to make sure that students don't get in the pool? Or was it, was it just like a okay? Or what was it?
It was a combination of a, of a verbal, but they've started acting on it, because not having a permit was one of the issues.
Right.
And they've already came in last week and pulled the permit. So, they're acting on that conversation.
I just want to make sure, I mean, it's based off of the information given to us, because, I mean, that was a very serious topic I talked about in the last council meeting, that there's a sure, that we are sure that students, even though it's not confirmed, you know, even though it wasn't permitted, which is already issued itself, but even the life safety issue, that students are well aware that they shouldn't be swimming in that pool until that inspection is had. So, I just want to assure that.
Yeah, I can, I can follow up and do the...
So, we're, we're going to sit here, we're going to pretend like a multimillion dollar developer didn't know that he needed a, a permit to, to open a pool, like, at some point, there has to be something.
Well, we, it's not the first multimillion dollar developer that did not get a permit from the city until the project was after completed right across the street, and we happened to have more conversations.
So, here we go again.
No, 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 all I'm saying is...
So, any, here we go again, so anytime anybody talks about Panther Hill Development, we want to talk about some other development in the city, or some other situation that's similar to Panther Hill. We're talking about Panther Hill, because what we've realized over the last, at least three, you know, we're not going to go back twenty-four, the last three to four months, we realized that everything that they've done has been intentional. It wasn't an accident that they didn't get these permits and these inspections done, they did that so they could save money. Everything they've done up to this point, they did so they could save money, and we're defending them, we're, we're letting them hide behind excuses, and we're not holding them accountable. Period.
Period.
Mr. Mayor, uh, with, with, you said they just got a perm, a applicant, a permit application. Who is doing the plan review on the pool? You, you said then, so there, you said the engineer, found an electric engineering company do the inspections, who's doing the plan review on the pool?
Well, the plan reviews will have the engineers.